All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting of the Asante City Council to order. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We have a roll call. We are short one council member tonight. Councilman Steve Lundeen said he would not be able to make it due to work. And let's see here. Any public comment this evening? Otherwise, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda. We don't have any changes, do we, Josie?
Good evening, Mayor. No, we did not.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adopt the agenda, second.
I have a motion from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? That motion carries four zero. Moving on to approving the city council meeting minutes, we have the August fifteenth canvas board meeting minutes. We have the August twentieth committee of the whole meeting minutes, the August twentieth city council meeting minutes, and the August twentieth city council budget work session minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve those from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? That motion carries four zero. For announcements, we've got our committee of the whole meeting coming up Tuesday, September seventeenth at five P M. Our planning commission meeting that same evening at six P M. And our city council meeting on the seventeenth as well at seven P M. And then we have our park and recreation board meeting Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at six P M. Do we have any council committee reports?
The chamber and school board meetings were relatively uneventful. I didn't think there was really much to bring back this time, so. L M C meets in a couple of weeks for the last meeting of the of the year, so we'll see how that goes. There's a couple of policies I know that we are kind of hoping to bring forward this year. Hopefully, we can get some traction on those.
Sounds good. Any other committee reports? All right, we'll move on to our first business item, K one, the roundabout project update, geometric layout.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. So now that we have been able to move into design phase of this project, we went and collected new traffic counts, kept track of the heavy vehicle, the big truck counts, the percentages, and kind of came up with some tweaks to that original concept, and that's why I wanted to bring this to you today. It's pretty much just an update to let you know where where things are sitting. Basically, what we found was that with the the amount of heavy vehicles we found and the increased traffic even from the last counts, that it would be a better functioning roundabout to go, but technically by title from a mini where that center is completely concrete to a small standard roundabout where there is the grass in the middle. That basically takes the diameter from the seventy-five foot, that's called a mini, to a hundred and twenty-foot size. So slightly bigger, it would have that center in it, but essentially it would make it so that those semis, when they're taking the turn through, don't entirely block the entire intersection. It's the diameter is big enough for them to be able to clear out of the way of the other movements, and it gets the intersections slightly farther apart to give those spaces to let the vehicles through. So that's the tweak to the roundabout itself. And then from the feedback that you guys had given, you know, from the original concepts, we have added that full intersection essentially at Credit Union Drive. We even added a westbound left turn into it, which we found reduces how many vehicles are trying to go through the roundabout. And so as long as it's open, we're letting that function how it would and actually reduce congestion in the roundabout by doing that. And then, as you know, we discussed also, we added that long turn lane into QuickTrip to try and get vehicles, cars and trucks, to go to QuickTrip without having to go through the roundabout as well. Again, reducing the amount of vehicles trying to maneuver through there. And I guess one other, the only other tweak is the the north median now just blocks a a vehicle coming out of the the strip mall there from trying to go north, which is very unlikely to happen anyway, because anybody going north would go out the northern exit. But we just felt that that was worth making sure nobody's trying to make that maneuver while there's backed up traffic or whatever might be going on. So primarily, those are the adjustments. With those adjustments, if you look on the figure there, we're able to have the two lanes make it quite a bit further before we have to reduce it down to one, thereby reducing that fear of the cars backing up all the way to the intersection. Our modeling is saying the way this is laid out, even on those peak events in twenty forty-four, it would only be getting backed up to about Credit Union Drive, which if at that time, you know, we're only barely getting to that or, you know, in that area, and we already have the people being able to turn off to go into those other side things, that it it looks like it'll function pretty well. So with all that said, that cost estimate wise, this was our first stab at it. And even with all these adjustments, we feel it actually comes out at about the same price that the estimate originally was. And so it still fits exactly what has been talked about for budget, cost splits, funding, and all that good stuff. And I guess with this update, I guess if you have any questions or comments, otherwise, we'd be moving into three D design to make sure it actually fits into the ground around it. And then from there, we'll move into that land acquisition thing, you know, to figure out what limits of right-of-way or or easement we'll need to acquire. And that was, if you recall, all the way back to when we were trying to go after this grant, was the driving force, because that can take eight months to a year depending on how for projects people are and, you know, and making sure we check all the boxes. And so we're trying to get to that, starting the land acquisition process as soon as we can, so that we know it's not going to be a hangup. So with that, I guess, any questions, comments? Otherwise, this is just an update.
I think this looks significantly better than what we had, and there was, I was very happy to hear that you guys did your own sort of traffic study on it because we didn't trust any of what we had to to work with the first time. One of the things that I thought we could maybe add into that, I'm sure you looked at it, but a right out, like an acceleration lane out of Minco Drive there onto Heritage eastbound, because it looks like there's plenty of room for it there. I worry that that single lane and then trying to take a right off of Minco in during any sort of traffic in a single lane situation there. If you're trying to take a right to go eastbound, you're never going to get out of there without an acceleration lane.
I think that's a great idea, looking at this.
I mean, it looks like you have way more than enough room there for that.
Is, are the colors pretty true to spec to what it's going to be, the overlay?
No, actually, I meant to bring that piece up. So the purple was essentially the limits of what's striping or anything we're going to do was going to be impacted. Because like if you look west of the roundabout, from the roundabout to the tracks, it shows purple all the way there, but it's essentially just highlighting that we're going to make that shared use lane and keep it a single lane. The actual construction limits would pretty much end at about the end of that median on the, you know, on the west side of the roundabout for like redoing the pavement. It would just be we'd grind off the stripes all the way to to the tracks to relay them. And then same with to the east to the to sixty-five. I guess it's hard to define, but if you're looking on the picture there, where the the westbound left turn lane to Credit Union Drive median kinks. So essentially, the second that turn lane starts is where we would vary from the existing median. And so really, that's the spot that we'd rip off the rest of that median to the west, but we'd leave the median east of that as is. So our limits would be, you know, a few hundred feet shorter than the purple and drawn median towards sixty-five and, you know, five, six hundred feet shorter to the to the west towards the tracks for constructing the road. The rest is just striping essentially, you know, visibly displayed on the figure.
That left turn out of Minco going west, if we have a, it looks like a turn lane, two lanes, and I can see all three of those lanes getting backed up, and that left turn could be really difficult during rush hours. Is there anything else we can do to address that?
Eliminate it. That's our, that's our recommendation. We don't want it.
Yeah, well, I think I personally want it because during regular peak hours, you can make that left. I just made it on the way here.
Yep, but literally, that is the exact movement that will not work eventually.
I agree.
And it's, it's going to either have to get closed or, you know, or rerouted. And between now and twenty forty-four, that'll be the thing that starts not working, but everything else looks like it's going to function.
How much room? I see it goes two lanes all the way to Credit Union Drive. What if we box that into one lane, a turn lane and one lane a little before that, and make some room for a left turn exit so when they get on there, they have a little bit of room as traffic's already shuffled all the way to the right, maybe?
Sure. So actually, that's exactly what I already did. If you recall, the original one only had a median that was like six feet wide. I had our guys add that turn lane and make it where a standard like twenty-foot-deep vehicle would be able to get, like if you notice how it's kind of like skewed to the left where the actual intersection's laid out. So it's it's physically already set up where I made that median. You can tell that's a fatter median than any of the rest to have a vehicle fit, you know, non-trailored vehicle, but a standard vehicle to be able to try and get there. Because that was my very first concern on the original concept was anybody that half goes and gets stopped is blocking cross-traffic. And that still very well could happen, you know, depending on how that car is up their back or has a trailer or not. But dropping the lane earlier was exactly the the thing we were trying not to do so that we could allow the two lanes of turn lanes coming through and not have to make them merge earlier than they have to, which jams them up. And so the only thing you can't really tell on this striping is that I believe, I believe the southern lane is the the primary lane, and the other one will merge into it. You know, we don't want to have another one of those where the two lanes just blend like they currently do at the tracks. And so, so we will have that defined primary lane, but trying to do it as late as we can is better for the congestion coming off of sixty-five.
Sure.
I think it's, I think it's great, the way that's designed there. I had a question also, when you're turning, going eastbound on Heritage and you take a left on a Minco Drive. It looks like that median's awfully close if anybody's hauling a trailer of any kind. Is there a reason that that median is that far out? Is it to stop people from going straight all the way across into QuickTrip, basically?
Yep, I, again, I guess I kind of made my my traffic geometric guys extend that.
Okay.
So that I have median blocking with somebody just trying to shoot across. And if you look, they've only drawn it in as a little V kink right now on the other side, but to extend the curb to fully overlap, so there's literally two raised median things blocking somebody to try and make that maneuver. But yeah, it's literally, it's intentionally forcing that to feel tight so that it's blocking people looking across. They, it'll look like you only can hang a left because there's stuff in the way, and there'll probably even be a sign right there.
Yes.
Facing south that says, you know, either the diamond or something that's saying, you can't go here. On that note, somebody trying to turn left there likely would make that like a surmountable kind of curb or something, just in, you know, for the.
I'm thinking semi trucks coming into McDonald's or whatever.
Yep, so, so I can just kind of keep adding notes here. But yeah, generally, that's kind of the intent. It was to visually block it, but yeah, there will be that.
Tail end of the trailer smacking, yep.
Yeah, so the sign location might have to be, you know, placed well. And then otherwise, I think the only thing I see is I think we're going to probably narrow the actual neck up in, like at the connection to the QuickTrip parking lot. It's wide right now for the semi-vehicle to be able to make the turn and have all the room they want. But we're going to want to pinch it once it enters the parking lot so people don't accidentally go into it, and then they find themselves facing the wrong way and they're stuck. So, so some tweaks that are still happening, but these kind of four major things are the things I wanted to bring to you guys before we got too far down the road and, you know, and somebody didn't like it. This same thing has gone to the, or we sent this to the county engineer. He's bringing it to the next committee meeting, I believe, maybe in a week or so for the the county board to see it as well. And and then once everybody's kind of had their chance to look at it, you know, we'll be moving into that three D stage of the design.
So what are we doing with the sidewalk?
Oh, that's all the the pink is is the sidewalk.
Okay.
Pretty much, you know, I guess that that's kind of how it's going to go. You can see it, it's going on all legs, all quadrants. It's common that that green between the the pink walk and the the curb in each of those, at least the northeast and the northwest quadrants, that can sometimes be a, either a colored concrete or a different, you know, jointed section of concrete so that large semis that are taking those rights can tail over that as well. But now that this isn't a mini roundabout, the radiuses are designed to be big enough for that not to have to happen. But that'd be the, one of those final fine-tune design things that would be if, you know, if it turns out the radius is too tight and we're finding semis are going to need to carry over it, we'd either kind of push that out or or just make it a surmountable curb with some concrete for them to be able to bump onto.
And we have easements for all three of these corners, basically?
No, no, that's why we are at this stage as early as we are. We have to decide on our geometrics, figure out how they're going to fit, and then literally draw in what easements or right-of-ways we need to obtain. And that's the driving force here, because that, the obtaining that easement and right-of-way is is the critical timeline. And we got to make sure that all, you know, is able to get done.
If I could add one thing just to make a slight correction is that the county engineer, Mr. Bergerson, did have it on the county board of commissioners' agenda this evening.
Oh.
So it is in their packet. I'm not aware that it got pulled, so they should have discussed it around six thirty this evening, just as an update as well. They had this, our Jason Cook's memo in their packet, and that's the information they got as well.
Can we go back to my original question about the right out on Minco eastbound on an acceleration lane type deal there?
Yeah, I can look at that. You know, that does merge into, you know, we got one lane coming out of the roundabout and and to kind of, we're going to have to look at whether or not we can have the striping that would define a acceleration lane.
I mean, even if it's not an acceleration lane, why not have the two lanes and have them used there if they need it? Because it's just a lot of wasted real estate. I see a lot of wasted real estate on this whole thing, honestly. And it makes me wonder, well, can we actually fit two-lane route into a two-lane roundabout? I mean, we got all this space that's with medians and stuff. It just, and all this green space that we still have available, it just makes me feel like we could still do a two-lane roundabout. But if we can work with this and use all the space that we have, would only make sense. I don't know.
Sure. So like I say, we'll look into it. Geometrically, I don't know that there's room for a lane to be. But, you know, essentially, that is only that wide because, again, that's where the current curb is. And, you know, it's purple right now, but we weren't planning on even ripping out that piece of curb or the trail in that southeast quadrant of Credit Union Drive. And so it may not.
I just see that, that's a big bottleneck. You get all, if in the morning when you have eastbound traffic, there's no way you're taking a right out of Minco Drive. Impossible. Or during the peak hours, which is eleven to twelve or whatever, there's, there's no way because now you have, you have two lane, or you have all that traffic coming into one lane, and a roundabout slows them down, so it's bumper to bumper. So there's no way you'd ever take a right out of there if it's only one lane unless you're getting really aggressive and, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, Credit Union Drive, I mean, ideally, would not exist there. Yes.
It's a big connection, though. That's a lot of people that use it, yeah.
It's still going to be, it's still going to be a rough deal for the apartment complexes and stuff trying to get out there too with one lane.
Yep. That's why that makes me feel like we could still do the two. I mean, maybe one lane separate just for that entering or exiting that complex. I don't know. There's, I see a lot of green space, grass there that is still not used.
And Jason, I mean, I, how did, I mean, did they just have a bad stud, it was WSB that did the study for the county, right? When they originally did, I mean, so what what leads? I mean, we we saw at the time when we were watching their modeling, and I remember saying, hey, there's not any traffic. When southbound sixty-five comes in, there's hardly any traffic that's coming westbound onto five from southbound sixty-five. And, I mean, we looked at that modeling at the time and thought, boy, this isn't accurate. I mean, we could just see that. I mean, we're, we're just a bunch of dummies up here, and we could see that, you know. So how, how do, how do those guys that are supposed to actually know what they're doing screw that up that bad to where now we're looking at this and having to change our plans pretty drastically, actually, and?
Can we send them a bill for reengineering?
So, I mean, I don't have their model, you know. I can't know how they have their setup. You know, they did set it up originally based on the pre-QuickTrip traffic counts. You know, then they had to update them with their newer counts, you know. I, I just can't know exactly what their process was. You know, when we were ready to move into this kind of final design, you know, we were just wanting to make sure we're using our own data and knowing that we believe and are confident with what we are going to end up building. And so, so that's why we did what we've done. I mean, more or less, that's all I could say. We do have to make a this formal report called the Roundabout Justification Report to be submitted to state aid to get approval. You know, like that shows how we're checking all the boxes of maintenance and design for a roundabout. And so we needed to have the data and the modeling to be able to make this report. So it's, it's not an uncommon step that we took.
Right.
It's just, you know, our findings just had some tweaks from that concept that was made. You know, admittedly, I mean, the roundabout diameter is really the only thing that changed technically from, from their original report, and they didn't even get into an exact diameter. They just called it a mini, you know, because it was concept level. Our other turn lane things that we've added are things that we've all talked about and wanted to add, so we've added them, you know, so.
It's much better, and I was so happy to see that you guys did your own. I, I've been doubting this whole thing from the start just because of that poor, poor job by that engineering firm to do that traffic study. It makes our jobs a lot harder and less confident in our decisions, so.
I mean, do you think there's a danger of not getting the grant because there's such a change then to the original plans, or?
I guess we did send a notice to the contact for the grant to say, hey, this is what's changed. You know, let us know if you see any issues. I guess I don't know that we've heard back specifically, but my grant people are, you know, telling me they're confident that a tweak like this is just, like even the, a roundabout is between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and eighty-foot diameter, and it's not like you're locked into a certain diameter from a concept figure. So, but it looks like because this is still essentially the same thing, that nobody's concerned about losing any funding from it.
So is that center island section, is that still going to be a surmountable roundabout on the outside there? It kind of, it kind of looks like a sidewalk like most other roundabouts. You can still tail up a truck.
Right, yep, the, the, whatever that color is there, is a surmountable curb for you to drive over with the concrete pavement. And then the green is another curbed circle within the grass in it.
How high will the center be from the road, the green area?
Um, I don't know that by how small it is.
More than a foot or?
The intent is to try and get it as high as you can without it being like steep and non-maintainable because you want to be able to try and block the visibility to have all the people that get gun-shy in an intersection. You want them to only look at the car coming to them. If you come into a roundabout, the only thing you need to look at is a car coming at you from your left at any given time.
I think just aesthetically, I think that's not going to look good. You know, I mean, that's, that's one of the reasons why this is, to me, is pretty irritating because I think the, the being able to have the surmountable curb and just drive straight through for these trucks was a better-looking roundabout than what this is going to be now.
So the trucks will end up having, I would say, an easier time with this because the the turn is not as tight.
I agree.
They're going to be able to follow it like they would want to take a larger turn, and the back end is going to tail over that whatever color.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's any more difficult for the trucks to get through.
I think this looks better.
I think this is a better, a better plan, but I'm just saying, just looks-wise, I mean, just, you think about driving through St. Francis. I mean, those roundabouts just chop the town up.
Those are huge, though. Those are humongous roundabouts.
That's what I'm worried about. I mean, is that what this is going to look like, you know?
So I think with how small the diameter is, there will be that much less space to make a large, you know, hill or whatever you want to call it. But, you know, that's a piece of that, kind of this final design, the third dimension of this design, that would be getting finalized. So I can talk to them about making it as low as we can. You know, I know the goal is either if it's just going to be grass to make it mowable, so it's not going to be, you know, this crazy, steep, you know, hump. But we could certainly try and make it as low as meets the criteria if that's the preference.
I think it would look pretty good with a hill and like wildflowers or whatever to block the view. Like you said, it makes people less gun-shy. And I, I've seen the the surmountable roundabouts, and I think they're ugly as hell myself. I, that was the only thing that I didn't like about them was they're, they're so ugly. A lot of small towns have them, and it's just like, what is that? You know, so at least this will actually look like something, so.
I mean, is there any, with the new data that we have, I feel like maybe, and just other discussions that I had with some people, that maybe a stoplight now was going to be a better option than a roundabout as far as the the grading of the traffic flow and stuff like that. And, I mean, I pushed for a roundabout the night we had that meeting with, or not a roundabout, but a stoplight the night we had that meeting with the county, and we didn't have enough support. But, I mean, with the new data now, I mean, is a stoplight a better option than a roundabout?
So we did run that. It still essentially shows, even just when the original report was made, technically, it has a slightly better level of service for vehicles. It did in the original study as well. But once you factor in cost and, well, not, primarily that this accidents and public safety side of things with the crossings that there'll be, it's just found that in the end, this is very close on level of service, traffic function, and safer. So the recommendation is still this option over the the signal. And we have run that evaluation.
I'm with you, Jimmy, on that stop, stoplight. But the only reason I'm considering this is because the first person who runs a stoplight T-bones somebody and kills somebody, then I feel it's on my conscience because we didn't do a roundabout. It's pretty hard.
Stoplights don't work.
Pretty hard to T-bone somebody in a roundabout. I mean, yeah, we're going to have accidents in it, but I don't believe they're going to be life-threatening like, like somebody running a light.
You weren't on the council at the time that we decided this, were you?
Nope. Too many people run stoplights. We see it on sixty-five all the time. At least the, this slows down traffic. You're forced to slow down. This gives a lot shorter areas for pedestrians to cross. I mean, the traffic flow is just significantly better. You don't have to worry about any sort of backups because of poor light timing because you know the county and the state on lights, they're not going to work well together, just like everything else. Like, that's a nightmare, I think, but I would rather see it left the way it is before putting a stoplight in myself. But I think, I still think there's room for a two-lane roundabout.
I had a question. So with the, with the mini roundabout, with the the center being all concrete, during rush hour, the emergency vehicles can go right through that. Are they still able to have enough room so that in the rush hour of this mini or this roundabout, the emergency vehicles will be able to get around all the cars in the roundabout?
So, so I don't, I don't know if that initial statement is quite, I guess, right. If there's vehicles in the actual pavement around a mini roundabout, they're still going to have to clear out of the way for an ambulance to make it through.
Yeah, but the mini roundabout had the whole center concrete, and then if it was rush hours, emergency vehicles could go right over the middle of that. Is there, is there going to be enough room for emergency vehicles go around cars that are in the roundabout, this this drawing?
So it essentially would be the same in that if a semi is going through it, the semi is tailing up onto the middle curb, it's going to probably be blocking things until it can get out of the way. Either way, it would have. If it's not, and these are all just cars and they're not up on that middle concrete, then yeah, then there's that extra kind of almost like lane almost for the emergency vehicle to be able to cross. for the emergency vehicle to be able to cross onto that if that is in fact needed.
Is that about ten foot, eight foot or ten foot, that little surmountable curb?
Yeah, yep, that's what they usually are.
Okay. So, you could use that worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario, but essentially with that, you know, with the roundabout, it's all exits, right, so, if one's, if an ambulance is coming up, it really should only be the vehicles in front of it that are needing to clear, and the other ones aren't coming in because there's an ambulance, and so it's kinda one of the easiest things to clear, where nobody is in that red light stop condition of a stop light, and they're like, not sure if they're supposed to dive out into the intersection or how to get out of the way. This one's as clear as day as how to get out of the way.
People do some weird things when the emergency vehicles come up behind them, they get,
Freak out, yeah.
They do, yeah, and they freeze. Sometimes they don't move at all.
So, so the freezing, you know, it's the same idea of as long as they can get by a car, they'll be able to get through the, the roundabout, but you know, I guess it's that same idea if they're freezing and they're blocking the lanes of traffic.
I just wanna make sure there's enough room, or the curbs are, you know, they're not the ninety-degree curbs, so.
Yep, yep.
Are they all surmountable, all of them, basically on this whole project, or around the center anyways?
Yeah, around the center for sure.
Okay.
Um, usually the noses on each of the medians are, just because of
Trailers.
Vehicle movements.
Yep.
Um, and then those outside radiuses usually are, depending on how long those radiuses can be, and you know, whether we're worried semis are gonna try and go over them. Hopefully, these are long enough radiuses where that doesn't need to come into play, but.
Is there any benefit to doing a ninety instead of just doing the four-inch surmountable, the whole, on that whole, the median's everything, because, because of, say, like, an emergency responder vehicle, there's a big crash intersection, they have to drive up on that. It's a lot harder to go over a ninety than it is a, a forty-five or whatever angle they are. Could we just do that on the whole project? I mean, what's the benefit of having a ninety, a ninety-degree curb versus a forty-five-degree surmountable, or whatever you wanna call it?
I mean, I can, I can look into it. Usually on the narrower, I, medians, you know, it's the high-back curb to definitively stop cars from hopping it and going into the oncoming traffic. Because if you, say you lose control of your car, that, a six-inch curb is actually gonna help redirect you, surmountable isn't. Um, so those straightaway parts are usually the high-back curb, and then anywhere we're trying to make a tighter turning movement, or where we'll shift to the surmountable to make up for the people that quite, quite make the maneuver, you know, how we're, we're trying to direct them to.
Okay.
But we can certainly see how much of it we can make surmountable.
Do you have a, another diagram with footage? I'm just worried about that eastbound turn on a QuickTrip on a semi. It's really close. It may not be, but I, I can't tell how many feet this is.
Eastbound turn auto QuickTrip?
I mean, if they're coming out a QuickTrip and heading towards sixty-five, heading east.
Oh, you mean making it all the way around the roundabout?
Yeah, all the way around, that's what I meant, all the way around.
That's why it hits better, that's why I said this is better.
That's why this diameter is as big as this.
This one in the last drawing, coming out a QuickTrip, heading towards sixty-five.
Yeah.
There's so much more room there.
So much of a different perspective, the way this new diagram is, so it's hard to tell.
I mean, I like this a lot better than the original plan, other than, other than the center being an, an eyesore.
I think it'll look better. I, I really do.
But, I mean, if we were to try to switch to a stoplight now, I mean, you're not gonna get that grant probably, and it's gonna be a nightmare, right, so.
And it wasn't, I don't think it was a close vote on the stoplight, was it?
No, it was me and Steve. It was me and Steve and, and, uh, Mike Waring, if he would've been here, I think would've been, would've been on board. Where, where, I don't know where you would've been at on that, but.
I think roundabouts work most of the time, but there are issues that, when there's high volume of cars, it's hard to get out from, like, Credit Union Drive and go to sixty-five during rush hour, because the roundabout is so busy and it's constant flow, and it's hard to get out.
That's why you gotta have that turn lane.
Yep, so if you could add a, a turn lane by Credit Union Drive.
Well, you, you guys mean that acceleration lane?
Yeah. You have to have that.
A lane to get out.
I think so, too.
Because.
I wish there was some way to do that same thing for the apartment building, too.
It's not just an apartment, you know, it's businesses. Sometimes there's high, high traffic there.
Businesses and four apartment buildings and.
Yeah, and, and there's a learning curve with roundabouts still, even though there's a lot of roundabouts around now, but there's still a learning curve.
Is there enough room to do a, a lane, an alternate lane just for that, so you have, say, like you have now, you have it curbed out, um, down to a single lane, but what if you had, instead of the, that pink and green area there, you just had a lane just for coming out of the, out of that apartment and going back, and then merging after? Is that not feasible, just because of the lift station, or is that just because it's different?
Well, I guess, I'm not sure how you mean merging after, you know, that's the problem, there's only the, they, they have to merge in to traffic, and so.
Are you saying to make the entrance the exit, so kinda flip-flop it, so they'd be coming out and have time to get out into the lane before meeting the roundabout?
No, 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 I'm saying if they had their own dedicated, so if you look at the, the roundabout's design, the south side, where you have the green stripe and then the pink stripe for the sidewalk and that colored cement or whatever you talked about, instead of the purple exit going in and them somehow getting into traffic there when it's already zipper merging, what if that was just their own lane where the pink and the green was, and it was curbed off, and then they had to merge after the roundabout? Is that impossible? I mean, is, or is it just strange?
Take away the, the sidewalk basically and the green space there.
Yeah, but you, you'd obviously have to add that on the outside of that, which, I mean,
Yeah, and then they're not able to actually, yeah, I mean, that'd be a, a side lane that doesn't actually interact with the roundabout, or it's not gonna work, and it would.
That's what I mean, it'd have to be curbed off, so it's not even a part of the roundabout.
Right, so then they'd never be able to go north or any other direction, they'd only.
Oh, yeah, true, okay.
Yeah, and, and then that would be significantly more land and into that, uh, uh, our lift station there. You know, this footprint really is almost touching our lift station in the bottom left and touching QuickTrip sign on the top right, and, and we'd just, the, anything after this width at those two points is gonna be relocating one or the other, and be a significant cost change.
Okay. Well, what do we tell those people with that business, those businesses there on that? Hope for a, a connection southbound at some point, like we discussed, or?
I mean, I was actually just.
I mean, I don't think the stoplight fixed that problem either. I mean, it was, it's just a, there is no, no good solution really for that one.
But now you have two lanes merging into one, and then another lane trying to enter, so it's three into one, it's a huge bottleneck.
Yeah, no, it is definitely more of a bottleneck than it is now. It's, it makes everything else better, I think, but it makes that much worse.
Do we know why it's one way in and one way out?
I was wondering that, too. Is, are those signs put up by the city, or were they put up by the, the mall?
When I came in to town, there weren't signs, but it was one way in and one way out. And we added do-not-enter signs on the exit road when we added the sidewalk through there, and that's when we added the signs, but it was already an established one of each. I'm tempted to say we evaluate making the other one just.
Wider.
Yeah.
It needs to be much wider, even right now, turning, turning right into there, I go to the gym there, turning right into there when you're going eastbound, it's still hard, for whatever reason. It's like that, I don't know if that's not up to code the way it is, for even just one-way traffic?
Also, the difficult thing is, is last time I was there last week, there was a car coming out the inn, so, and people were wanting to get in, and they couldn't get in because one was going out the wrong way, so.
So, I mean.
Blocks traffic as well.
So, they might be forced to have to do something with it if the exit on the east side is not sufficient.
I mean, I would say that rework would just be part of our project cost, because if we're already gonna modify the exit of the one, and we're already gonna be trying to get easements and rightaways to just modify, you know, change that to twenty-six feet wide, and, you know, redo their bit of curb and lose a stall, that's, you know, we'd have to work that out with, that's half-private, you know, parking and whatnot to, to get all that part worked out, but, you know, if we at least made that both-way option, and we still had the exit only over by the roundabout, you know, now we got two ways out.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
I like that option. I was, I was gonna say something before you mentioned that, because that's a really good solution for that. Okay.
So, tell me more about this, this center lane, uh, westbound after the roundabout. How is that gonna be used, is that just a dual-purpose turn lane, or can people ride in that to try and zipper later, or?
No, this is to maintain the single lane, the second you merge getting into the roundabout, you stay that way all the way through town. Or, this is already how we're striped, all the way through town on this side of the tracks, so it's just keeping it consistent.
Okay. There's no creative way to use that space for, I mean, right now, this, this looks great for this intersection, but what about in the future when we have to look further down? I mean.
I think it works. I mean, it's a turn lane either direction.
And at the railroad crossing, it's two single lanes, and that's all the wider the planking is. And to get into that is a whole lot of fun to mess with the railroad and trying to widen a, an arm crossing to add a lane or anything, so.
So, now, if you're going off of Dollin Street and you're gonna take a left to go westbound on Heritage, are you allowed to use that center lane as an acceleration lane, because right now there's kinda two lanes you can get into there? And then merge is?
Travis.
Okay, because, I know right now, right now, you can. I do that all the time. I, that's the only way you get out there, you use both lanes, because you have to.
Yep, it's called a shared-use lane, it's not called a turn lane.
Okay, so it's, okay. Don't ask questions.
I don't mind that part at all, nothing.
I, I'm just, I was just looking for clarification. I don't mind it either, but I.
I do like the idea, though, of, of widening that entrance, if we can work with them to, to do that, to be in and out on that west side of the parking lot for the apartment complex.
All right.
Yeah, you need us to vote on this or anything like that, or you're just, just more of an update for us and some direction?
Just so you understand that, uh, you know, these tweaks happen. We got some more tweaks to try and incorporate. I think it's gonna look good, and, you know, once we get into this three-D phase of cross-slopes, drainage, all that good stuff, we'll know if any other tweaks have to happen, and then it's getting into that land acquisition step, so. And we'll find out what the county had to say as well, and see if there's anything else to incorporate, but.
That Menko acceleration lane is a must. I'm, I'm, if we can't do something with that, I'm gonna vote no on this, wouldn't, whenever a vote comes, so. Just wanna make sure that's important.
I think the vote's passed already.
Well, I'll, I can still vote against it.
You can certainly voice your opinion anytime you want. All right, well, sounds good. Thanks, Jason. I appreciate you bringing that information, so. Yeah, moving on to, uh, K two, we got the twenty-twenty-five preliminary budget and levy adoption.
Good job, Jason.
All right. Mayor Council, I'll, uh, I'll go through my standard presentation. Um, I think everybody's seen it a few times. Steve's probably thankful he's not here, because he's already seen it fifteen times.
I was gonna say, I wonder if that's why he had gotten himself into a messy job today.
That thought crossed my mind, yeah.
Yeah, mine, too.
So, um, but nonetheless, I have a, I've been sick for the last week, so I will probably try to shorten things up, so I'm not totally without a voice tomorrow. So, this is one new slide I added, that, uh, we've established the council goals as being, you know, three-pronged quite some time ago. Kinda added a little bit of commentary, right? No debt paid with taxes, that's a goal. We're not there yet, but, um, I think it's September twenty-thirty, August twenty-thirty, something like that, we'll get to that point, right, and the, the thing everybody's heard me say a thousand times, right, buy three, get one free, right? This is by not, by not issuing debt and saving money on that interest, um, you can literally pay for an entire project. Fund balance, right, um, provide tax relief when it's needed most, right, when you have those, the, you know, the Great Recession, Great Depression, those types of things. And based on the conversation last time, I just wanna make sure I plant that seed in everybody's mind, that, you know, while each of us have a definitive timeline, and we may or may not think that it's gonna happen in our timeline, the city exists in perpetuity, so it will happen for the city, even if none of us are here, so. Um, and then, of course, we talked about a steady declining tax rate, right? We've gone over that a bunch of times, that at some point, you've gotta join the, um, the Atsegos of the world and, uh, and be able to compete on that, uh, on that metric. And, um, it's not a thing that happens overnight, but you can take bites out of it over time, keep knocking it down, do, doing your best, uh, over a long period of, uh, of time, right, and I've told the story a few times, right, um, you know, people really just don't wanna be surprised when they open their tax bill, right? When they open that, they wanna feel like there's some certainty, um, some consistency from the prior year, so. Go over the, go over these real quick. This is maybe not as much for the council, but maybe for anybody that might be watching, uh, live, or, uh, would look up the YouTube video after the fact. Um, you know, municipal, municipal budget is a big document, lots of numbers, um, lots to consider. Um, and so, really, the way that I do this, the way that anybody does this, is you break this into smaller bits and pieces that are a little more manageable, a little more easy to grasp, and then you work on those smaller components individually, um, right? First category, operating revenue. This is, uh, operating revenues expenditures, right? This is gonna be, uh, levies, um, rates, right? This might be rental rates at the ICC or something like that. This is a competency I think is pretty much easy. This is the kinda thing, anybody who's really paying attention should be able to take care of that. Um, intergovernmental revenues, um, here in Minnesota, it's LGA, right? That's the big thing. And there, again, um, if you're getting money from another, you know, whether it's state or federal, another, or, uh, um, level of government, there, you will be compliant. There are, there are legal mechanisms to require such. Then there's the capital projects. Think about this as projects that need an engineer, right? This is capital items that need an engineer. To be honest, you're, you're competent in that mostly by paying an engineer, to be honest. Maybe burst some people's bubbles sometimes, but, um, that's what you do. Then there's the capital maintenance and replacement, and this one is the one I think that is the bread and the butter. This is the, the marginal competitive advantage. This is the thing that I think most other cities do not do well. Plenty of counties that don't do it well, um, but this is, this is, I think, our, our competitive advantage, right? Capital maintenance and replacement, these are non-engineered projects by and large, um, or at least minimal engineering, and the goal is, you could list everything, right? From tuck-pointing brickwork to roofs to windows to squad vehicles to trailers, you name it. Um, and having those things out there and looking at a far enough timeline that you can give yourself a, a, an understanding of where you need to be today, so that you're prepared at twenty and forty years out in the future. Fiscal management, this is really, the secondary item here is, is that we've got those components, but it's, it's really important to be considering your timeline, right? And most cities, when they do this, they're looking at maybe five years, a few of them maybe do ten, but by and large, you're not gonna find any cities that are looking out beyond ten years, and we do that very, very differently here. And if we're the only ones doing it, I'm okay with that, because I'm very confident that's the right answer. But I think that's the, in the end, that long-term planning is, is how you're gonna end up with a tax rate that can be steady and declining. It's never gonna be able to go down every single year, but we can certainly, uh, we can certainly put together a good trend. And that leads, I think, to, uh, to the, to twenty-twenty-five proposed levy. Not a, not a super big increase in the general fund levy, a little bump there in capital maintenance and replacement, a more significant bump in street construction as we kinda get that all, uh, fine-tuned. We remember, we, a couple of years ago, we went, Jason and I went through and reworked that five ways from Sundays, and we're actually doing a little bit more of that today, and we'll come back around with that in, uh, in October, probably, with some more recommendations about how we can swap things around and get a little, save a little money on mobilization, right? Pull some of those mill and overlay jobs together, move some of those steel coating jobs, group those things up a little bit better in the, in the coming years, and, uh, and hopefully, uh, save ourselves a little money on that, so. The EDA levy, um, that's, that's a statute, uh, statute thing, right? That's capped based on estimated market value. I went below the cap on that this year, just because we've, we've got sufficient levy there. Abatement levy, this is really regarding the hotel project, and I have to be able to. Abatement levy, this is really regarding the hotel project, and I have to be able to delineate that for, um, for the department revenue at the end of the year. They've got stuff that needs to be submitted by December twenty eighth, so I gotta be able to detail that. Um, and then debt service levy, the two oh three, three eighty-five, um, that is just one debt issue. And that's the one that we're gonna come up here on the end in twenty thirty, um, that relates to the, uh, the IIA, right? The, the indoor arena.
I have a quick question. The debt service levies went down every year, and this year it increased by a couple thousand. Can you explain why? Couldn't figure out why.
It is, it is, it is all, in the end, it all comes down to when you issue bonds, let's say, um, you issue a million dollars of bonds. You're not actually issuing a million dollars of debt to one person. That is being divided up into what they would call tranches, right? So different years and different maturities, and based on what the bid is on those individual ones, some years have slightly more interest than other years. Based on what the market bid at the time you issued the bonds. So you will have little, but you're not gonna see, uh, you're not gonna, in the future years, you're not gonna see a wide variation from that. In your mind, you should just be thinking of it as about two hundred thousand every year, and it's not, you know, you're never gonna see that all of a sudden now change to two seventy-five or drop to one twenty-five. It's right in that range, and it ends up being based on what they bid in particular years for that issue.
So were they trying to predict, you know, years down the road, what the interest rates might be? Is that?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool.
Every, every, yeah, and you don't normally seep onto that stuff, and hopefully, we're just not gonna issue a bunch of bonds, and you guys won't become familiar with that process at all, but.
Amen.
But that, that is how that works. It is not quite what it looks like. It looks like a, a loan, right? Here's my million dollars, here's my loan, this is my one rate, but it's actually a whole series of hundred thousand dollar, uh, transactions at different rates based on their maturity.
They're more risk averse that way.
Well, and it, and it matters a great deal what treasury yields are, and, you know, you might get a great rate at, um, you know, on stuff maturing in the first year through the third year, but then it goes up through the fifth and seventh year, but then comes back down. Because there's a more, you know, more rosy long-term view. And, and those will change with every bond issue every year that any city issues, those things will.
It'll probably be a pretty bad time to issue a bond right now, if I were to guess. A new one.
It's always a bad time to issue.
I agree, but right now especially.
I was kinda half waiting for that. Uh, proposed tax rate, um, right now, we've got this set for substantively a, a, a zero change, um, point zero two percent. And that's just because I picked a whole number, right? And no matter what we set here, this isn't gonna be like the final, right? There's always got some adjustment at the, at the assessment's office either of their own fruition, or because somebody has challenged their valuation. And that gets settled in December, or January, or March, or next April. Um, and if it really goes out far enough, there would be a correction backward, um, that, that would affect things, so. I think the more important thing here to think about it, or more interesting thing here rather than just a zero percent change is, um, how far below that is the, the fifteen-year average? Twenty ten to twenty twenty-four, um, and remember, twenty twenty-four includes the forty-four point eight, right? Like, um, that's a, that's a long ways under, nearly a third under the average. That's, that's pretty cool.
Now, I, I of course had to call Mike and ask him today, how do we get that point zero two to zero, or, he said we needed to come up with five hundred bucks, so.
And I, and I couldn't help myself. I had to redo the math very particularly, so it's six hundred and fifty.
Okay, well, and is that, and then we started talking, well, is that, now, if we go to the three digits from, you know, it's virtually zero. But, but if you want, if you guys wouldn't mind, if, if we wanna get it to.
If we want it to be as precise as it can be today, cause you guys instructed you wanted zero change, you would, we would, when we go to pass these, we would drop the general fund levy by an additional six hundred and fifty bucks.
Okay.
So.
So if we just call it like a thousand, we'd be safe too? That might actually be.
Yeah, but then it might be negative point zero one.
Well, and that'd be okay. I'd be okay with that. So that would be what I would ask, is let's just drop the general fund levy by a thousand dollars.
Quick question. I see the central air is up, and it was like forty-some thousand dollars.
What did you say, George?
The central air conditioning for, for the city hall is up. When I walked out of the last meeting, somebody stopped me and asked me if we could please turn down, or turn up the temperature in the chamber, because it was so cold in here. We had a problem with the air conditioner. My, my theory is if it's not broke, don't fix it, and yet we're gonna replace it.
So there's a couple of things. There's, one, part of the problem we have over here is the air exchanger has not been working in this section of the building since day one, so that's part of that problem.
On which side?
This, from the hallway this way.
So this, this room you're saying is the warmest room?
No, I'm saying you're not getting the airflow that you, you would think that you should get throughout the building, right? Like what we get for airflow on the other side of that door versus what's on this side is not the same. Those are two different air changers.
According to numbers, according to numbers, and what, what they wanna sell you on.
But this is, this side from that hallway over is used the least.
Mm-hmm.
Alright. I wish Steve was here, but I, I would guess, you know, you, you could have ten, fifteen more years on that air conditioner.
So the, the, what, the useful life in the capital plan is twenty years, and we pulled that forward, and we pulled that forward because there's going to be new free on standards.
Right.
And so we can basically wait, and we know that price is gonna jump from forty up to about, they figured seventy, I think seventy-two, something like that. So we're gonna go up like thirty grand. So if council wants to wait, that's fine, but I think that as we approach twenty years. Personally, I'd rather take the sure thing and save myself thirty grand, but.
Do we know that for sure, that those, you know, the first one or two years production, usually they are higher, but after that, then they, they come down?
I am not an expert on that.
Well, you're pretty certain it's gonna go up thirty grand if we wait?
Well, if I, man, I have, I, that's, that's what our mechanical, or, uh, mechanical contractor has said, he's like, just so you know, here's your, here's your two choices. This is how this is gonna end up going, so.
I've heard the same thing.
Have we had service calls on this unit at all over the last five years?
Yeah, we've, yeah.
We've had repairs at least twice here, and then the, uh, community center too is in there, but I'd have to find specific dates if you want dates, but yes, we have had repairs.
I mean, I can tell you right now, it's sixty-seven degrees in here according to that thing over there, so.
It's, it's always cool in here. I've never been warm.
I've never noticed anything, but.
Well, council chambers are always a tricky one to get right ahead of meeting, because if I have eighteen people behind me.
Yeah.
It's a lot warmer in this room than it would be if I have two, so, and that's always a tough one, but.
I think we can dig into a lot of that stuff. I mean, remember that we're still just talking preliminary, you know, budget here right now, and so, you know, we obviously are hoping to see some other decreases in other areas too, so. So we'll have till December to really hammer away at this thing, but I think, you know, today, I mean, the goal was just to make sure, okay, we're gonna have, you know, a zero percent, and.
Yeah, and if, and if council, and, and you guys don't even actually technically have till December, right? I mean, you can just say, you know, you can think about this, and Jeff might come in on February and be like, you know what? I have asked a thousand mechanical contractors on this, and no, this is a terrible idea. Let's just wait. We'd just amend the budget and just push it out. That's that. Right, so this, I mean, this isn't, I mean, while things are scheduled, uh, you know, especially with the capital maintenance and replacement plan, like, none of it is like definitive happening. I mean, the only things we might act on, like immediately, would be ordering a plow truck or a squad vehicle, those things that have that huge lead time where it's like, you're just hoping that maybe you receive it inside of twelve months. You know, those types of things, we, we don't spend a lot of time waiting on. We're gonna place those orders on January second. But this type of, you know, siding and air conditioners and things like that, you know, we're not, nobody's doing anything on that on January second, so. Levy history, I guess the, the, the big thing in here to notice is over time, it goes up, right? And even if you had a stagnant population, a stagnant city, nothing changed, um, that bar graph would keep going up just because inflation is affecting, right? Tax rate history, um, yeah, I mean, it, that one graph is a, uh, you know, a tale of, of tale of two cities or a tale of two stories, right? You know, a, you know, a nearly ten-year period up and a, and now a nearly ten-year period on the downward trend. So that, that's a, that's more like what we'd like to see the second half of that graph. Yeah, and I touched on that, right? Um, I don't spend a ton of time talking about levies. Tax rates are a way better way to compare across, between cities and across time, um, or even both. Levies are not super helpful. Um, I give you guys the example, when we get to February, to December meeting, it's usually I can have at least some residents watching, right? And we say, hey, this one's got, uh, you know, a levy of, you know, a few hundred thousand, this one's got a levy of a few million. Where do you wanna live? Well, it turns out, you don't wanna actually live in the city with a really small levy, cause they actually have a really high tax rate. So you don't necessarily know that, but if you have, if I just give you two tax rates, it's not hard to figure out which city you wanna be in, right? I'll wrap it up with that. If there are questions, comments, concerns, um, oh, last thing I should note is if, if anybody didn't find it, we'll, um, we're using, uh, per direction at the last meeting, we're using one hundred and fifty-eight thousand and change on, uh, fund balance. Right? To keep, to get to zero, at least for now, and, um, we'll drop it out another thousand perhaps, if that's how, so then we'd be to one fifty-nine and change, so.
Which was like we talked about, I mean, that should be, and I don't know if you did the math on that, Mike, but we're at fifty-four percent right now, fund balance, and we thought it would bring us to just a little hair under fifty-two, basically, so. Which, like I said, I mean, I don't know. I mean, how much we should really be having in there. I mean, I'd be, I'd be okay with it maybe even going lower than that.
I completely disagree with that.
I know you do.
Yeah, I think there's, I mean, what if we need to, what if we need to, if there's a, a big recession, say for five, six years, and we gotta sort of help our people out for five or six years, that money will be gone so fast. It, it, it takes a long time to build. It's really easy to empty that account, so I have a hard time even justifying the one fifty-eight, but with your, you're usually overestimating on most things. So I think that'll, you know, I'd rather see us take nothing out of that myself and not add to it, but at the same time, I get the goal here.
How much of your residence money are you gonna hold? Like you said, you're sitting at fifty-four percent of.
Yeah, but you don't wanna hit them when they're down and need to tax higher.
Aren't they down now?
Oh, right, that's why I'm, I think it's okay, but it's, yeah.
And like, I mean, what did you say, Jeff? You thought, you know, if we, if we continue this pace, I mean, we're gonna see a fund balance that's.
I think this can be at sixty-two percent, but Mike disagrees.
Yeah, I think it'll be lower than that, but we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna find out who's buying who dinner in, in, uh, April, right, so.
I'm okay, but hesitant with the taking it out of the.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, that should be done cautiously and carefully, but.
This is not set. You can still cut stuff.
Right.
So.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's the thing too, is that, you know, if we don't have to use that to, to hold this rate, I mean, we, we have till December to, you know, like George said, if we wanna hold off on certain things, or, you know, air conditioning being one of them, or.
And we, and we know that there's still information to come, right? There are insurance renewals, not just one, that I think that I have been sufficiently conservative with. Hopefully, um, and hopefully that when the actual renewal comes in, it is below what I estimated, and there is extra money to be had there, right? And then suddenly, that number goes from one fifty-eight to, to one hundred, or to fifty, or whatever the, you know, um, you know, so, I mean, we, we, we're gonna have to wait and see. And I'm, I mean, if, if memory serves me correct, we should expect the first full week of October. So it, based on when the first is, it'll feel like the second week of October, but that would be the rough timeline that I should have a number by. So hopefully for the second meeting in October, we'll have a, something to discuss.
And what happens, worst case, if the insurance rates go up thirty percent, then what for us?
I think Mike has already factored in a, a raise on the rates compared to what we have now, haven't you?
Yeah.
I mean, if the numbers come in astronomical, then what? Then we're taking more of our fund balance because we didn't levy for enough initially?
You can always.
That's the only way to get out of the hole?
Looks like there's no air conditioning getting replaced this year.
Oh, right, true.
I think that, I think that my estimate is reasonable.
Okay.
I've been doing this a while, a little while, and, um. Let's just say this, when you get, when you are in a group, a larger group, right? So a group with multiple cities and counties. And you start, for example, when we, when we left the co-op, it was because we had a twenty-eight percent renewal, and Princeton had fifty percent increase in their rates. For, for those of us who pay attention to that, that wasn't a variation that came out of nowhere, right? The highs and lows at the co-op had been much closer together, and over time, they started doing that more and more. And it was once that spread got to a point where you had some people renewing at five and some people renewing at fifty percent, like you know there's a problem in that consortium, right? That, that doesn't, that's not a thing that happens overnight, and you can see that trend line coming. I don't see that with Peep. I, I think their trend line is actually the other direction now. They had for a ten-year period, their average renewal had been like two point six percent. We moved to them, and a lot of people moved out of the co-op because of what I just described. And in those first two years, they went way above two percent on renewals, right? We're talking a lot of groups in that ten, fifteen, twenty percent range. But now that they've absorbed those groups, and the market has balanced itself out, I think you're gonna see that return to, to a, a, a more reasonable trend in the long term. And, and Pete, by the way, is, I think, I think has the incentive structure, um, to help keep costs down in the long run, because when you, when you, and Peep, um, as an employee, when you go to the doctor, you actually have to pay money. Right? And so that, and that's a really important detail, because it keeps people from just showing up at the doctor for a paper cut, right? Like, if your paper cut's infected, fine, go, but don't show up for a paper cut. And if they wanna do that, they actually have to pay money out upfront until they get to their, their deductible, deductible threshold. So that, that is a really effective incentive structure for that program. But yeah, if there are any other questions, um, please let them go, otherwise, if we're, if we're comfortable with the resolutions that we have, we could do them sequentially as they're listed, or you can just say all three, uh, with our one adjustment for a thousand bucks.
Any other questions? Well, I'll make a motion for all three then with the, the thousand dollar reduction to the general fund levy on the, uh, third one there, so.
Hold on, I thought he was gonna, are you gonna talk about the comp, comp plan at all? And are you gonna move? I see you have it highlighted, um.
The CIP plan?
Yeah. Are you, because it looks like you're gonna start it next year. You have it highlighted. Are you gonna move it out? The comp plan for Tyler and Forest Street?
The comp plan.
You mean CIP plan? The C, in the CIP document that you have in the packet?
Yeah, it's in for, what, twenty-seven, twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight?
Okay.
Right, so the.
And the highlighted means that it was moved beyond that, but it didn't show it in the graphs.
I could have an errant highlighting on that one.
Okay.
I, I suspect that's leftover highlighting from when I needed updated numbers from Jason. Right? Cause we revisited, hey, is this, is this an accurate assessment of, of what that cost would be for the project?
Okay.
That's what I'm thinking is, you're seeing there.
So that'll all just get moved over?
Yep. My understanding from the council is we wanna have money there so that if they wanna, if they wanna petition and be, you know, and have a project done, we will be prepared to do it. But otherwise, the understanding is, and I have that, well, if you, if you, if I give, if you had my Excel version, do you see there's a note in there? And it is, and it's also noted on the left-hand margin as resident initiated, right? Otherwise, residents don't initiate it, it just keeps, keeps ticking back out. And if they come in, you know, four years or forty years, and say, we want this done, we're, we're just ready to pull the trigger and go.
Maybe next year, we work on a letter. I like how, when we've been reaching out to the residents, we've been getting great response rates. Maybe we need to, you know, give a letter to both of those streets and see what they're really thinking about, and if, put a questionnaire out.
Yeah, I think that was, I feel like, I feel like this was you and I that originally talked about how to structure this. But, I mean, that was, thought was, is that if we queue this up as early in the plan as we can without having a massive impact in the levy, right? That's how we ended up in the years that we ended up with, as close as we could pull them forward in time without having a drastic change. That was just giving those residents by default maximum flexibility, right? Give them as many options as they can, right?
Sure.
We can pull the trigger as early as twenty twenty-seven or twenty twenty-eight, and in theory, you would pull the trigger any year after that. Or just keep pushing it back one year until they actually come in and say, yes, please. And if they don't, then we don't do it, and we just keep, keep pushing it out.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the whole idea is to not force them to have to. Yeah, I mean, yeah, the whole idea is to not force them to have to go off of what they've...
And whether it's four years or 40 years, at some point, they're all gonna come together and say, this is just in our best interest. All the wells have failed, all the septic's have failed, the roads, you know, at some point, they'll say that they want, they want the project done. But it should be when they're ready, not, not five council members saying, tough noogies, here it goes, so.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure because it's highlighted, but the numbers are still there for next year on what I'm looking at, so I just wanted to make sure.
Okay.
Okay, I'm all right, I'll second it.
Okay. So I have a motion from myself and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 4-0. Thank you, Mike.
You bet.
Thanks, Mike.
Moving on to K3, the resolution to consider amending the CUP for Winter Greens to add pickleball.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we had an applicant, Mr. Stosky, who is located at 306 Credit Union Drive for Winter Greens. Had an approved CUP for, to put up volleyball court over there, and they're in the B2 Business District. That was approved in that 2016. The request was heard before the Plan Commission on August 20th, and there was a public hearing held, and that was approved and recommended to go on to City Council. There are some recommended, recommended, um, things that be followed per this request, which is the pickleball courts will be fenced in, and the boundary will be in line with the existing fence of the adjacent volleyball courts to not impede upon the drainage and utility easements. There will be grass maintained between the curb, cut in the parking lot, and new pickleball courts to allow for continued drainage. And all required permits will be applied for, including but not limited to zoning, building, and electrical. And this is actually on the adjacent lot just to the south, which would be at 304 Credit Union Drive.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 4-0. Moving on to K4, the resolution to consider authorizing the contract with Digiticket.
Mayor and Council, just a little background, so we're in LETG Records Management since 2007. They made a transition to this Oracle Records Management for ourselves, rather than the other two police departments and county. The county actually picked up the tab for that for three years with, I think, their ARPA funds, which, which was a significant benefit to us. Anyway, that Oracle needs a third-party ticket writer program. That's the, what this is to enter into that agreement. The county's already agreed to it, so if we want to write tickets, we gotta agree to it as well. The LETG annual maintenance that we have budgeted for $9,300 for 2025 is still in the budget. Because we should be transitioned before then, and we'll be able to make that amendment hopefully by the end of this year. And then this is, the upfront cost is the 334, and annually is the 5, 6, 5,5664. So the, as long as we get this going and Oracle on board by the end of the year, that LETG maintenance for 9,300 would switch over to the Digiticket for 56. Now, at year four, there's gonna be some Oracle costs as far as that too, but that's out on year four, so.
Do you have any idea how much more?
How much more the Oracle cost is? Yeah, we had that, I don't know, Mike, do you remember what that was? I gave you that, that's been a while.
Substantial, or?
Not substantial, no. I mean, it's more, now because we have to pay for Digiticket and this Oracle piece, it's gonna be more, but it's not substantially more. As far as the Oracle piece is not substantially more than the, the LETG piece, as well as there's not, everything's every four years. We have, uh, every four years is a $3,000 maintenance fee that we pay to the county for the server, which then will fall off that capital plan too. Just another one of those technology pieces. I mean, it's 100% software. All of this is 100% software-based and data storage.
I was looking at the bit, it says that, and I don't know, and the Oracle mobile might be something different, I guess, than the regular Oracle program or something like that? Because it says it's not integrated currently, but they're working on it?
Yeah, so it's not, so that's part of the deal. In order to get them, they need, that's, it's on the agenda tonight, because Thursday is the kickoff to actually have it integrated. So they're working, so the third, this Digiticket has to work with Oracle manufacturers to get it integrated. And hopefully we'll know, it should be integrated by the end of the year. I mean, there's a lot of steps to that whole Oracle piece with, we've been working on that since February.
Yeah, it's, they haven't even started trying to integrate yet.
No, no, and so we had a meeting two weeks ago, and they kinda wanted to know what the entity's thoughts were.
Yeah.
And the county already has their, the county agreement, I think Cambridge has the council, you know, so county has a resolution, and Cambridge has a resolution, so they're moving forward with them.
Okay, so I mean, do we have to start paying if they're not ready to go, I mean, according to the contract, or I mean, is it...
Well, the upfront fee, yes, but not the actual application monthly fee.
So once they're ready and they actually have it done, then we have to start paying, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I don't, the dates are interesting because the whole Oracle date of, was July was the go-live date, and now we're out into October, so.
Well, yeah, that's, yeah, but that's kinda how that stuff goes.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah. So cost-wise, be about the same, eventually it'll be about the same as what we got now. It looked like we had to buy new printers or something too, or?
No, it's, it's just, we have printers in the squad already, they just want to make sure that they're the six and seven. So they're, the sixes are in some of the old squads that are, been replaced. I don't think we're gonna have a hardware issue.
Okay.
And printers are like $400.
Not bad. All right.
So in essence, for the short-term time, you know, there'll be a $3,000 reduction, at least for the next three years.
What's the reason that they wanted to make the change? I mean, just the...
The records management's change?
Well, yeah, I mean, it was over the LETG and...
Yeah, so it was 2007 when it came in, so the, the kick, the catalyst to that was last year, we got a letter from LETG that says, starting, and they gave a year. So the year was up in, early this year, January, February, somewhere there, that starting in a year, we will no longer, we will give you a 30-day notice when we're no longer gonna support that operating system.
Yeah, I remember talking about that now, I think that you bring that up, yeah.
And then, once everybody started bailing, now they said, wait a minute, no, we will support it, and then they go back and said they won't support it, so.
Yeah.
That was the catalyst.
Yeah, that rings a bell now, yeah, okay. Uh, it looks like if you paid the full amount for the annual rate, that you saved 4% or something like that, is that something we would want to do?
That would be a Mike decision.
Yeah, I always take advantage of that.
Yep.
All right, any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Heeman and a second from Councilman Holmgren. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 4-0.
Anything on the consent agenda? Well, actually, before we get to that, I should mention, I, I just wanted to say thank you to Public Works, and I probably could have said that earlier in the meeting, but for all the work that they did after that, after that storm we had. So they, I had a lot of comments on, on the job that they did and how well they did it, so, so that's a ton of work, so.
I'll expand on them here if I could. Also, a shout-out to PD for calling in Public Works the night of the storm. We had one of our Public Works guys in here at 8:00 PM and worked a very long overnight and next day into just making sure that the roads were maintained and cleared. So thank you to PD for helping and assist us to let us know when we need to come in, and also just some of our office staff helping Public Works out. And it was a great team effort, but huge shout-out to Public Works.
Yeah, well, and yeah, like you said, the office staff too, I mean, we kept that, the compost open, I think, every day after that, that storm happened. I don't think there was a day that we closed it, and we took larger brush in, which I know we've got a big pile of...
What a pile. I was just there before this meeting, man, I don't...
But, and I think we're gonna extend, I think we, we extended taking the larger brush through the end of this week.
Through Saturday.
Through Saturday, okay.
Yep, it's normal compost hours this week, and it will be accepted through Saturday.
Right. But there was a lot, there was a lot of people that were, they had to wait for the insurance adjusters to, to get there and to actually come in, so they couldn't clean up sooner. So that's the why we, we extended it too, so.
I was there at 6:00 and 6:30, and there was at least five cars there each time, so.
Can we open that up for firewood? People might want to go in, cut their own firewood, or bring, bring wood out?
It'd be really hard to get to it, the, the brush pile is huge. I don't see anybody actually be able to get up there and pull stuff out personally. Not safe, yeah, definitely. It's a good idea, though, because otherwise we gotta pay to get rid of it.
Well, when they, when they start pulling some of that stuff out to get rid of it...
Maybe just leave the big stuff?
Some of the bigger stuff aside and see if the public may want it, because I have a feeling we'll be able to get rid of it.
Currently, what we're looking at doing is putting together, accepting quotes from people to come in and chip it onsite, and then we'll have, you know, mulch available for people.
Sure.
We can even put some of that in the compost, and that helps accelerate composting.
That's a great idea, too.
So that's currently what we're thinking of doing. That pile is pretty compact, as we've been pushing it up and kinda keeping it nice and as small as possible. So it is, it is very compact.
So I know we've, we, earlier this year, we looked at the costs of buying a wood chipper and getting rid of this. I mean, should we more seriously look at a wood chipper at this point?
I think that they're definitely, I mean, this is an anomaly. We don't have, if we had this annually, I would say that maybe that is something. But we also have to look at the safety of the people, the time, and the availability of Public Works to do.
Couldn't the seasonal do it? Because 95% of the time when I'm there, he's just sitting there reading. So you're, I mean, it's a good job for him, and I know he's not paid a whole bunch, but...
We'd have to look at the horsepower, so the union contract governs what they can and cannot do depending on horsepower.
Even on a seasonal?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, they're not allowed to work.
Especially on a seasonal.
Unions, I'm like, oh.
Well, I mean, it's for a good reason, I guess, to make sure that they're, they're keeping that separated, and usually the best way to keep things separated is to look at the horsepower of equipment. There are, of course, exceptions, and we have some exceptions, but that would be something we'd need to ask if it was something we were looking at.
I mean, I think, looking at the pile out there, you're gonna be 50 grand in the hole if I were to get, I mean, that's a big pile.
Where we were before was not anywhere that high, but it all depends on how, how big it gets by the end. It has grown definitely in the last week.
And if you're gonna have them trailer it down to Rivards or whatever, in man time alone, there's 50 grand.
Yeah, we're not looking at doing that. We're looking at hiring someone to come chip it onsite and leave it there, which would be a less expensive.
Yeah, I think the whole plan kinda changed when you, because I mean, the original idea was, okay, we're not taking anything, you know, more than a pop can, you know...
Which we could use the smaller chipper and have our seasonal guy who's sitting there anyways chip this stuff as it comes in, and then it's not a problem at the end of the year versus having to pay our salary, 50, 60 dollar an hour union full-time guys to drive it down to the Rivard and get rid of it, doesn't make any sense. I think we should buy our own chipper, whatever we can get, the biggest we can get, and have him do it.
We could put it on a council, talk about it again.
I mean, I don't know if that he'll want to do it.
It is unbudgeted, so whatever we do, it will end up coming back for council, so we can definitely have it on a discussion before we spend too much time and get, use resources into getting quotes, if you'd like to discuss it first, we can add it to Cal.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah, and then as far as George's point on the bigger logs, could we just keep those off to the side and maybe make a post-take on? By the time we get it all sorted, I don't know, because you're gonna have to pay to get rid of it, so why not just see if anybody actually wants it?
I think depending on what kind of company we get, if they're using like a large chipper and they're just throwing everything in it.
No, I mean, I mean, I mean for actual residents to get it.
No, I, I understand, but if you're gonna ask that person, that contracted, whoever you hire, to set aside certain things, I mean, that's time for them that they are gonna have to pu, pick apart.
Anybody that wants firewood at this point probably has plenty to...
All right, right, I'm just trying, I'm trying to avoid paying to chip the big stuff, because they're gonna charge more for the big stuff. I mean, if you have that in your pile, now you're talking twice as much for, you know, so.
Well, for our October band music thing, were we planning on having a bonfire?
We are planning to have some small bonfires based off the recommendation and rules by Chief Jankovic with the Fire District.
You can't, fire won't allow it.
Yeah, they're, they're small piles. We are not having a large bonfire, no.
We couldn't pull a special use permit just to, uh, burn that whole thing and just have the whole fire department there for it? It's gonna save us a lot more money.
Wait for the snowfall. That'd be really nice.
I mean, I, I don't think it's unreasonable.
That was the whole original idea, was, you know, take brush and then have an Oktoberfest sort of thing and burn it all, right?
Yeah, that's what I thought it was.
But no, that, we, we went a different direction, because we didn't want a big party on the Public Works grounds and...
Well, why don't we just, why don't we just burn it anyways for that big of a pile and just have, I mean, pay fire to be there? That's gonna be a twentieth of the cost of paying a wood chipper to get out there.
Maybe, yeah, I don't know.
I think we can have future discussions.
To put in a quote, so the process will probably follow, will be to draft up, similar to like an RFP, a document, and request quotes to come in based upon whatever. I, I, I do think that we'll probably ask people to come out, look at the pile and give us a full not-to-exceed number instead of by the yard, because by the yard, you don't know at the end of the day how much is coming out, so we haven't completely decided on that yet. But interested parties can send Matt Sylvester an email. Yeah, we haven't sent anything out. Things will get put on the website when we're looking for quotes, and, yeah. Uh, I'll give a plug, if you're not on civic ready and haven't signed up for our non-emergency alerts, you can sign up, because those kind of notices get put out on that, and you can get it via text.
And what's the phone number they have to text?
The number to text, no. The number to text to sign up for all alerts, there are, you can pick and choose which alerts you'd like to sign up for, but if you're looking to do all of them, text ISANTI to 38276.
Okay.
How about the consent agenda, or what do you?
No, I was just gonna say, I think we're just gonna have future discussions on this.
And I still haven't heard back from any companies that do like a leaf vac type setup to go to Jimmy Rig a plow truck up, so. Still waiting on that. I don't know what's going on with some of those companies, but, yeah. So not this year for sure.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, thank you.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilman Holmgren and a second from Councilman Merrill to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 4-0.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Merrill and a second from Councilman Heeman. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That motion carries 4-0. We are adjourned.